All right, you guys ready?
Yep.
Okay. Good morning, I'd like to bring the July 9th, 2014 Planning and Zoning Meeting to order. Would everybody please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Posnell.
Present.
Commissioner Selberg.
Here.
Commissioner Buck.
Here.
Commissioner Azarmi. Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Coletta.
Here.
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Gabrielson.
Present.
Commissioner Gordon. And Chairman Lachey.
Present.
Couple of announcements, first announcement is going to come from the Director, Chris Ballard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to introduce one of our new planners, Michelle Pelacheck. She'll be working with us and she'll be working with you as well from now on, so please make her feel welcome.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. Few other announcements, if anyone has not yet signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete the Request to Speak form, which is also located in the lobby table next to the sign-in sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on, including sub-items. Please note that there are stairs on the right, left, and the center aisle, and we ask that you use caution when using these stairs. There's also a ramp located at the audience's left. If anyone has any written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to use at today's meeting, please have seventeen copies and give them to the staff member in the back of the auditorium. And she has her hand up. If you do not have seventeen copies, you may use the table with the overhead camera next to the podium to present your documents. If you want your documents to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item clearly marked on the document. Members of the public cannot speak to the staff members that are sitting in the front table with microphones during the meeting. If you have any questions, please see the staff member in the back of the auditorium and she'll meet you in the lobby. A timer will be activated for all speakers and will be limited to two minutes to make your presentations and statements. Everyone, please turn off your cell phones or pagers or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must receive a call, please leave the meeting area and go to the lobby to have your conversation. We also ask that you refrain from talking to one another during the presentations and discussion. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The items with the recommendation made by the Commission will be heard by the Board of Supervisors on Monday, August 4th at 9:30 a.m. in the same location, with the exception of any continued items. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking allowed, curb-to-key, curb. Also, only bottled water is allowed in the auditorium, no food, soda, coffee, etc. is allowed. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch at 1:00. Approval of last month's minutes, everybody have a chance to review it. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Who to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Buck and second by Mr. Selberg. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Consent agenda, anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Gabrielson. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number four.
Item four is an evaluation of a request for a rezon of Assessor's Parcel 204-43026 from an AR-16A agricultural residential 16-acre acre minimum lot size zone to an AR-5A agricultural residential 5-acre minimum lot size zone to allow creation of three residential parcels in the Blake Ranch Road vicinity. Staff recommends approval as indicated in the staff report, thank you.
Is the applicant present for item number four? We have one speaker on the item, Linda Coate.
Greetings.
State your name.
My name is Linda Coate.
Okay.
And my land and my home abuts this property. And I guess I wish there had been a little box for, "I'm not happy with this." And so, I really hesitated speaking, but was encouraged to do so. This is more for the record. Two things, really, that... One of the unique things about that particular area is that we don't have many 5-acre parcels. There's six, or seven, or eight, those who do have homes there. It's what makes it unique when we're going to look for a nice area to build a customer site-built home. Most areas that you go to, they're 5 acres or 1 acres. And I guess I wish that the owners, or even the Planning and Zoning Commission, would consider sometimes just the foresight that not everybody wants 5 acres and the ability to have more land for a lot allows you to build more than likely a nicer home if that's already started in an area, which therefore might increase your taxes, as opposed to selling things off in smaller and smaller parcels around already established neighborhoods. And I know when you look out there and you drive, you think, "Gosh, I think there's only sixteen homes out there." However, that is the case. Secondly is our water. There's going to be three more homes, three more people using the water. And most of you probably know those are alluvial plains. That's a very different aquifer than what Kingman uses, than what the Big Sandy, it's not the Big Sandy. It comes from the Walpey Mountains. And because of the fire last year, the water now rages down the mountain, which doesn't allow the time for the water to drip into the aquifer itself. So our water levels are lowering. I think that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions of the speaker? Thank you very much. We have no additional speakers, any discussion? Questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve per staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Posnell and second by Commissioner Selberg. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number five.
Item five is an evaluation of a request for a zoning use permit on Assessor's Parcel #344-17014 for secondary residence in an AR-25A agricultural residential 25-acre minimum lot size zone in the Hidden Meadows vicinity. Staff recommends approval as indicated in the staff report, thank you.
Is the applicant present? Okay, we have no speakers on the item. Would you like to address the Commission or just answer questions?
We'll just answer questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions or comments, discussion on item number five? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve according to staff recommendations.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Gabrielson and a second by Commissioner Coletta. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number six.
Item six is an evaluation of a request for a zoning use permit on Assessor's Parcel 326-03095 for towing an impound yard in an A general zone in the Dolan Springs vicinity. Staff recommends approval as indicated in the staff report, thank you.
Is the applicant present, item number six? Okay. We have two speakers on item number six. Maria David. Sir David's, say David, Maria, Maria? Okay, would you like to come forward and speak on this item?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to...
Please state your names.
I'm going to be like interpreter for her.
Okay, please state your name, though.
My is Elsa Del Sid.
Maria David.
Okay. What can we do for you?
Okay, ah, para mí que no está bien que lo pongan ahí porque acaban de quitar un un yonke a la otra esquina y luego van a poner otro ahí. No estoy acuerde en eso.
She's not agreeing. She says there was like a junkyard. They took it up and she's not agree about having the trucks in there. And it's real close to his, to her property.
Okay, how close is your property to this?
I mean, is it...
A fence, a 300 feet.
It's like about 300 feet.
Okay, so she is... I don't see a street address on here.
Ah, pero esto está más cerca, ¿no? Sí, estoy más cerca. Creo que es...
Way out there, 92C or...
He's got the...
Oh, okay, thank you, John.
There we go.
She's like the one is real close to the property. So I think she's over here, though.
So it looks like you're directly south, is that a good assumption, Mr. Montgomery?
It appears that's correct.
Okay. Anything more?
No, she says it's...
Okay, questions of the speaker?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Let's see, if that would be south, then west of the proposed property, is that currently in existence, the way that it appears to have an assortment of personal property on it? Back on the picture, if you could set back on the...
Just put it on the big X on the table. 92.
Okay, two lots to the west of the subject property, there looks like there's, exactly, looks like there's an accumulation of material in there. And then, if you go to the east of the subject property and then up north, one lot, if you could point that right above the word subject, right there, it looks like there's another accumulation of personal property on that one. Now, is that currently the condition? Are both of those lots, do both of those lots still have an accumulation of personal property on them?
So, I'm sorry, so what is your question?
My question is, is the material, and I hesitate to call it junk because I don't know what's there, but is the material in the pictures still on the property, or has it been cleaned up? She indicated that this lot has apparently been cleaned up prior to this date.
She's not too familiar with the map. She is right next to the property.
I see that, I'm just trying to establish in the community. She indicated this lot had been cleaned up at one time, that was the statement that you made.
No, nada clean up, let me ask him again. ¿Qué fue lo que dijo usted de que algo más estuvo ahí?
Eso fue yonke que había alante, aquí.
El yonke que estaba después de su casa. La calle bonita.
Esta es la propiedad nosotros, que ya pues está limpia porque se quemó la casa. Y esta es la casa de atrás, esta propiedad está limpia. Esta es la que quieren hacer la...
¿En dónde está yo, entonces esto es yo?
Este es.
Entonces me le di de un fence, nada más.
Okay.
Okay, pero no, pero se están preguntando ahora.
Aquí están diciendo que aquí había carros parqueados y aquí atrás, el de atrás.
Well, they're just talking, Mr. Montgomery, I'm looking at the zoning map here and I'm trying to figure out what the zoning is for the lot directly to the west. There's two lots there. One looks like something's going on and the other one just looks like vacant dirt. What are those zoned?
Mr. Chairman, I gave up my zoning map. But I believe this area is pretty uniformly zoned A general.
Okay, well, there is an A on it, but I didn't know if that was...
Yes, that would be the zone.
Okay, okay, so that... Okay. Two parcels over, or the second parcel over, which would be parcel 097. What's going on there? It looks like a lot of debris spread around in a big horseshoe. Is that a fair assumption?
Yes.
I believe there is a bunch of material in there, but I think that parcel is, has view of scaring fencing around it. As I recall, you don't see much from the highway.
Commissioner Gabrielson, you may be familiar with this area.
I am.
Could you give us a little insight?
Okay, the one off of North Pierce Ferry Road is very well fenced. It has a lot of cars on it, a lot of storage, different things. I don't know if at one time they were trying to make a junkyard, but it could very well fall underneath those circumstances. The one over here that you're looking at on North Calico, which is to the northeast, the 092D, that has a little house.
Got it.
With the cars behind it.
Yep.
That's personal property, and actually, that house used to be surrounded up by the road by nothing but trash and debris, which they have cleaned it up very nicely and their cars and stuff have been moved to the back. The house up on 092C, that one used to be full of massive piles and a young couple moved in and have done a very nice job of getting it cleaned. And the lady whom was the speaker right now, her place is extravagantly clean. So, and I do have a couple of questions for the applicant, actually, when he comes up. But that, they have been cleaning up Dolan Springs and a lot of different areas. A lot of people have been bringing it up to code, trying to make it a nicer place. They're trying to bring the public back now that they have the tour buses going through and a new wreck place opened at the old restaurant site and arena to bring tourists in and start recouping some money. So, depending on, you know, I'd like to talk to the applicant a few questions before.
Okay, okay. Could we have you sit down for just a minute?
Sure.
And we're going to bring the applicant up and maybe...
Good morning. My name's Milton G. Masters and I go by George. So anyhow, I'm the Vice President and 50% owner of A&amp;G Towing and Storage. First off, I want to tell you that we're not a junkyard. We're an impound lot, which means they stay there for a short period of time. So in this, for instance, if you were on 93 and you get in a wreck and until the insurance company can come out and take a look at the car, they have to stay there for a minimum so many days, you know, and I mean, it takes a certain amount of time to get them out there. We also intend, which we have to do by the state and other regulations, to fence that property 100%. To the, on Pierce Ferry, I'm really not familiar with north, south, east, and west, but on Pierce Ferry, as you pull in, that's got, that is not fencing, that's just old trailers that have blocked the view of what's been going on there. In other words, it's quite of a mess. And then, the place we're buying has been deserted for quite a long time due to the fact of a fire and it's, and it cannot, it has to be bulldozed down. It's definitely got to be gone. So we plan at this stage of our life is to naturally fence the entire property with fencing that you can't see through. And we're not a junkyard, we're not going to dismantle cars, we're not going to do anything. All we're going to do is pull them off the highway, bring them over there, and we'll have a 24-hour security, we'll have a one bay garage with an office and then a person living on the property per se in a part of that. So that's what our intent is.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question?
Yes, we have Mr. Selberg.
What is the current use of the property? I noticed there's like a metal building there. What's the kind of history behind that and what's it being used for now?
There's no metal building there, sir, there's just nothing but a house there that has been burned. And there's, that's it, there's no metal building on the property. To one side of us is that, I'm going to call it a junkyard because it certainly looks like one. You know, I'll call it what I see. And then, you got, you go down the street and then you got, we go 308 feet, I believe, down the street there, and then we have one trailer, I believe it is, and then the next guy down has got a special zoning so that he can have, you know, he can do pretty much anything he wants on his lot, you know, that he has. And so, and he does have the cars to the back and it looks presentable like we plan on presenting ours. We don't have...
I think Commissioner Gabrielson had a couple of questions.
I did, well, he answered one of them, excuse me, he did answer one of them about hauling out the burned debris and clearing the acreage, the fencing.
Yes.
However, with the larger trucks and the scale of a tow truck, right now, there's only a couple of big trucks that come out there down the road. I'm very familiar with the roads. The dirt conditions, we creep down them, okay? But are you going to do something to maintain that section of the road to prevent the dust and the ruts, you know, from getting worse?
We're approximately, we go by one house, I believe, and that's what I think we go by from what I'm seeing on our side, we don't go by anything. I hadn't thought about it, but I mean, if it required that there's something that be done, I'm sure that, we're not going to pave it, you know, or anything like that.
I'm not asking.
But we would certainly keep down the dust. I mean, what we have is nothing more than, we get a semi, or we get a car, or we get anything that's broke down on Pierce Ferry or broke down or in a wreck on 93. We have it all the way to the bridge, we have the AAA contract, we have other police contracts out there. So if it requires that short distance to be watered down every now and then, or whatever the case, I don't know what you do to your roads there. I know that there's only one house that would be affected, that I'm aware of.
Okay, there's the one house that you pass that would be affected and there is the house to the south, the lady who is talking, because wind out there, there's not a whole lot of trees.
Mm-hmm.
And dust goes everywhere. You drive one large-scale hook, okay, from your tow company with a car behind it, whether it's an accident or, you know, or if you have a load all, you know, roll back with a car behind it. Dust goes in many different directions out there, just because it is. And like I said, I'm familiar with that section of road and I know the road is not maintained very good, okay? So the more you drive, the bigger equipment, the deeper the ruts because there's a little wash that kind of goes on the one side that, you know, real soft dirt pushes out. And that's, you know, I'm looking at just if you plan on doing anything to prevent any more, you know, on that section to where you're going to be coming in from so that everyone around you and your place is...
Like I say, is to get to our property, if it did require some sort of dust control to our property, I'm not going to go the length of the road or anything like that, I know dust can go for miles.
Right, well, that's, just from Pierce Ferry down to where your entry and actually you don't address it.
That would be easy if provided what's required of that. I mean, I don't know, I don't know the rules out there, I don't know. You know, in other words, you water it down every month, or you water it down once a week, or you do this, or you do that, I'm not sure, you know, I mean, I wouldn't want to put myself and say, "Look, I'm going to put, you know, crush rock, asphalt, this or that."
I'm not asking that.
I'm not asking that.
I'm saying, have you thought about maintaining or what you're going to do when the heavy rains come through and you have a big rut through there? Your tires, our duly's are sinking in, they're creating rut, it's making it impossible for the smaller vehicles. Are you going to correct that situation so that the smaller vehicles can come to and from their houses?
Okay, I can answer that to the best of my ability. If we do any damage to the road, we would naturally fix the road, okay?
That's what I...
If us did the damage, but right across the street from us, I, please, don't take this wrong, but right across the street from us is a gentleman that has a backhoe and has a big trailer. He hauls out his equipment on two, and so, you know, I mean, I'm just saying, and also down the street is another zoning that he has, stuff he hauls too. So we'll do what we can, and I don't know, we never been out there where there's been a flash flood. We've never been out there. All we know is that there's a rundown house that needs to be taken down. I'm sure that would be a pleasant to you. And then, as far as taking care of the road, if we create a rut of any sort or we create some sort of damage to the road, we would certainly take care of that road. That damage, I should say. And, you know, to the best of our ability, you know.
Any additional questions, Commissioner Gabrielson?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. What type of average, monthly average calls do you get now? I mean, what type of load are you going to be putting on that road?
Very, very little. In other words, what happens is, is that we usually use backhoes and, backhoes, I mean, flatbeds, I lost myself for a minute, we usually lose flatbeds and they don't really weigh, you know, they come under the 26,000 pounds that are required, you know, the state makes us go up into, you know, different licenses and stuff like this. So it's just like having a heavy-duty truck, but not a gravel truck or nothing like that. Our loads are 26,000.
All right, and how long was, you know, you said it's just purely an impound lot, so how long is the vehicles average typically there? And, you know, so you've got to haul them in and you've got to haul them back out as well.
Insurance companies want them out almost immediately because they have to pay a storage fee for us, you know, and so they come out, so normally the impound would be out within a week, but sometimes it can take a little longer due to the fact that there's a death or something like this where they have to stay longer and the police make us keep them, a few things like that. But we don't anticipate having cars there for any more than probably, I would say, a good average that I would say that would probably be fit would be anywhere from a week to a month and a half if it was something that was required, you know what I mean, under normal conditions. I couldn't tell you exactly because everything's different. But our other impound lots, we have one in Bullhead, we have one in Needles, we have one in Cal Novari, we have one that we're trying to get in Yucca right now, and they all require that. And we don't do that much towing. Right now, so far, we've been out there for, with one truck, just operating one truck, picking them up and going to Vegas or going to Phoenix or going to Kingman, and we've had 12 toes in about two months. Now, that will come up naturally when we get on the police situation, that will come up somewhat. But we don't anticipate having a heavy out there to park at all. We anticipate to bring our heavies from other locations when we have to have them. So we use them for everything. When I say heavies, I'm talking about big trucks, you know, the ones that can haul semis and 40-foot motorhomes and what have you like this. We're going to be using, 90% of the time will be flatbeds. We're gonna be using ninety percent of the time will be flatbed or the smaller hook trucks.
Any additional questions?
Thank you. And, and not, like I say, I give you this example...
We gotta move along here, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
We're repeating ourselves a couple of times.
No, 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 that's fine, I'm just trying to answer the best of my ability.
No, I know, I understand.
Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, a neighbor's come forward and voiced her concern and, and looking at the aerial photography, it appears that, you know, there's nothing on this lot of this woman who is your neighbor and, and I can look at, on both sides, there's an accumulation of personal property bordering junk. And your metal building in the drawing that you provided, a placement of the metal building, is it gonna effectively go where the burned out building was on that side of the property?
That's correct.
So it's gonna be furthest away from, from this lady's property?
That's correct.
It didn't look like that on the drawing, I see. And then the parking lot next, you've got the metal building and the office, there's a parking lot to this area, is that your storage area?
That's where...
Or is it the storage area behind the metal building?
This, right now, we don't have the metal building up. My partner can tell you if, if, I don't wanna go on anymore, but it's all gonna be located right where the house is now. Pretty much our metal building, our parking is gonna be right in front of that metal building so that, you know, and our setbacks from the street will be, you know, as, as dictated.
Is your impound lot then where the parking spots are for the metal building or is the impound lot the back portion?
No, they're gonna be, the, we're kinda, we're kinda like not real deep. We're, our lot's not real deep. So there's gonna be some behind the metal building and there's gonna be some going towards that vacant lot.
Okay.
Uh, I've got, uh, two questions. One for you, you, we're talking about view obscuring fence, are you talking about entirely around the entire property? Is that what you're talking?
Yes, entire property.
Okay. I have a question for Mr. Montgomery. The, the lot, two lots over that looks like a salvage yard already there, is there a zoning use permit on that property or is it just zoned A?
Uh, off the top of my head, I, I can't answer that, sir.
Okay. Okay, okay. All right. I have no more questions. Let's, uh, bring the applicant back up here. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, George.
That was the applicant, I think.
Um, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, Maria. And was Elsa with you?
Uh, yeah, that's me.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss somebody. Okay, any questions? The speaker?
No.
Everybody cool with everything?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I have a question for you, is, uh, the entrance to your property? Are you, is your entrance on Calico or is it on the other street?
You're talking about me or her?
Her.
Usted está en Calico, ¿no? Yeah, she's in Calico.
Calico.
The same as me.
Okay, and you're located where?
In one four nine, I'm sorry, fourteen, oh, Jesus. One four nine, nine two. Something is wrong. I, I can't get the numbers right.
On the map that we have, that, that's on the table there? Can you point to where yours is at? As long as I got you both up there?
This is the one. I, I have to do with a map too.
Okay, so you're right there at the corner.
It's almost, uh, I'm almost cross to where they wanted...
Okay, so your, your, your property comes to the, to a point at the corner where there's, starts taking off there across the street, right?
Yeah, it's like, I'm here and then the property that, that we're talking about is right here.
Okay.
So it's like the road is in the middle.
Okay, so you're at that corner and then, uh, thousand feet down the road is where her property's located, is that correct?
Here's?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
It's right next to the other property they're talking about.
I'm just trying to get a handle on both where both your properties are. Okay, thank you so very much.
And, and then, you know, I not agree, I not agree that this, uh, towing coming, like, I'm agree with Crystal, it's gonna be a lot of dust, the road is not the greatest and, uh, I pay a lot of money for my property to be, uh, nice and peace. And with this, gonna be a lot of noise, I feel like gonna be a lot of cars and to me I feel like it's gonna be bad.
Mr. Chairman? What's, what's that, one second, Mr. Buck. Uh, the property that's directly east of you, what's going on there? It looks like there's a bunch of cars there.
It's behind your house.
Behind your house or to the east?
Excuse me, sir.
Yes.
Pablo Del C, I, the husband, Elsa Del C. Okay, this is my property?
That's yours?
Yes.
Okay.
Our property.
Okay, so that whole thing is your property?
Yes.
Okay.
The one, I wanna talk to the guy...
State your name so that we...
Okay, my name is Pablo Del C.
Okay.
Okay, I got my own tractor, it's my personal property. I no use for business. It's the guy is talking, I use for business, big trailer. Everything in, in the back is almost clean. My home is fired last year and everything is new now.
Okay.
And I pay almost hundred fifty thousand dollars for everything for scamming somebody company and putting a lot of dust and I got my own motor, that's almost ninety year old, they have a problem with it and, no way. I not agree.
All right.
Can, can I ask a question?
Sure, go right ahead, Mr. Buck.
Would you rather have a burned out building on this neighboring property left? I mean, do you feel that strong about not improving this property that you'd rather have what's there, this burned out structure?
Well, they should, I feel like there shouldn't be something done with the house, it's in a real bad condition. Nobody lives there and I feel like it's a lot of rats, snakes and they shouldn't take care of that kind of property, the one that, uh, where the towing's gonna be.
Is there any obligation, staff, is there any obligation to clean a lot after it's been burned out?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Buck, yes, there is.
So the future of that lot, if it doesn't become part of the towing facility, will be, it'll be cleared off of the burned out structure?
Yeah, Mr. Buck, yeah, would be considered a dangerous building and it would be, need to be removed, um, should we receive a complaint about it. And it's the property owner's responsibility to remove it.
All right, thank you.
All right, any additional questions, uh, of the speakers? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Can I see just one more thing and I won't...
Come on up.
Us buying the property...
Come up to the microphone, please. Restate your name.
My name is Milton G. Masters. We're gonna be tearing down the building, so that's gonna go, period.
Right.
That's part of the property, so that's gonna disappear, that's part of the, the plan. There won't be anything there other than a new building, you know, so we do plan on tearing that...
Right.
Burned down structure down.
Right, I think you stated that.
Excuse me, George, even if you don't get approved, you're still gonna tear down the building?
No, no, not, no, we're not gonna, in other words, if we don't get approved, we're, you know, we're just gonna let this go. In other words, our, our purchase agreement reads that we must get this approved. If we don't, we're gonna look elsewhere.
Okay, thank you.
That's what we planned, but...
Makes sense. Okay, uh, public comment is over. Comments, questions, discussion? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve per staff recommendations.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Coletta. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
We have two opposed, uh... Right? Commissioner Selberg, right?
No, Buck.
No. Oh, Buck and, okay, Gabrielson. What people we got here?
Seven.
Two to five. Okay, we got two to five, okay. Then the motion carries. Okay. Motion's approved. Uh, let's go to, uh, call to the public on items not on the agenda today. Hearing no public comments, public comment period is closed. Any monthly reports? No monthly reports. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Gabrielson and a second by Commissioner Pausnell. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming today.